Don't you know you radiate like the sun? We can feel your fire. Fire. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? The heat will take us higher, higher. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? We can feel your fire, fire. Don't you know you radiate like the sun? The heat will take us higher, higher. Radiate like the sun.
Good morning, everyone. This is the irregular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, November 21st. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Micah Andrews, CEO of Foundry Ministries, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Counselor Latonya Tate. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we just thank you today for your goodness and for your grace and for your mercy. Lord, we thank you for bringing us all here safe today. And Lord, as we enter this season of Thanksgiving, we want to offer our Thanksgiving to you today. Lord, we're grateful for this country that we live in, our freedom. We're thankful for our state. We're thankful for this city. And we're thankful for those that you have placed an authority over us. Lord, we just ask today for your blessings upon our time together. Lord, that your presence would fill this space. Lord, that your blessings would be upon our city, upon our citizens. And Lord, that in all that we do, we would honor and glorify you and give you the gratitude that you and you alone deserve. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Smitherman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Good morning. Councilmember Woods. Good morning. Councilpro Tim Alexander.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. This morning, we have minutes from the June 20th and 27th of 2023 meetings. If there are no additions or corrections, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So, move second.
Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
All opposed.
All right. That motion passes. The July 4th, 2023 through November 14th, 2023 minutes are not ready. Communications from the mayor. Mayor Woodfin.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning to thee. President of the council, good morning to the entire council. Good to see everybody this morning. Good morning to the public as well. I'm gonna start off by just saying, as we approach Thanksgiving holiday, I wanna give and send my sincere appreciation to each of you individually and collectively as a council for all you do for our city. I wanna thank our city Birmingham employees as well for all they do. I also wanna thank our, all of our businesses, whether it's small, medium, or big, for what they do in our city and community, as well as all of our residents. And I hope everyone gets an opportunity to eat well. I hope their football team win minus one. I think their colors are orange. And I hope everybody gets a chance to relax and be refreshed and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Speaking of the holiday, as you know, household garbage pickup for this Thursday and this Friday will be altered due to the holiday and the city of Birmingham being closed this Thursday and Friday. So residents who have Thursday household garbage pickup will have their trash collected tomorrow, November 22nd. And residents who have their Friday household garbage pickup will have their refuse removed next Wednesday, the 29th. Regular pickup days will resume the following day. Thursday, November 30th, and Monday and Tuesday of next week will not be affected. We'll also share this in various channels and continue to get this out to the public as well. As you know, the city of Birmingham participated in the Guarantee Income Program last year. Our program lasted for one year, our pilot program. And so the Guarantee Income Work National Tour is actually coming to Birmingham. It will be here next Tuesday, November 28th. And as, again, as you remember, our city, we partner with Mayors for Guaranteed Income. The name of our program that we launched was called Embrace Mothers. Our initiative, including supporting 110 single mothers across our city who receive a monthly, no strings attached stipend. And that was over the course of 12 months, one year. So during Mayors for Guaranteed Income visit next week, we'll be hosting a free screening of, it's a documentary called It's Basic. And this documentary looks at guaranteeing income programs across the country, and there will also be a panel discussion that will include former mayor of Shreveport, Louisiana, Mayor Adrian Perkins. That event will take place at the Woodlawn Theater, and that address is 5503 First Avenue North, 35212. And you can get details and reserve your spot at guaranteedincomeworks.org/birmingham. Again, that's guaranteedincomeworks.org/birmingham. A few weeks ago, if not last week, I shared that the city of Birmingham started hosting a warm supply drive. We'll continue that drive, and along with the Mayor Corps of Dentists, we'll host another warm supply drive for those experiencing homelessness. The drive will take place next week, November 28th through November 30th, at the Boutwell, and it'll be right in front of the Boutwell from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And volunteers outside will be accepting bottled water, toilet paper, paper towels, new or gently used coats, new gloves and winter caps, and hand warmers. And the good news is, if you are willing or want to drop something off, you don't have to get out of your vehicle to do it. Volunteers will walk up, and you can keep driving if you so choose, or you can get out, it doesn't matter. But we're grateful for those who are participating and want to support the supply drive. Just a few notes about, as the holiday season of Christmas approaches, the city of Birmingham is hosting, in partnership with the Birmingham City Council, a holiday block party. This is our annual holiday block party. It will feature food trucks, music, fun, and of course, the tree lighting in front of City Hall. This family-friendly event will take place Sunday, December 3rd. Festivities will begin at 4:00 p.m. The tree lighting is at 5:30 p.m. As well, last week, we talked about the Magic City Toy Drive. The city of Birmingham, along with CBS 42 and AmFirstCredit Union, continues to host our Magic City Toy Drive now through Monday, December 4th. To our residents and community partners, please consider donating new unwrapped toys and bicycles to help supplement low to moderately low-income families with their children's holiday wishes. As stated last week, drop-off locations are at the following sites: Department of Youth Services, City Hall, the Birmingham Police Administration Building on First Avenue North, all four police precincts, all Birmingham fire rescue stations, and all AmFirstCredit Unions within the city limits of Birmingham. And if you need more information, you can go to bhamufirst.org, or simply call 205-320-0879. Out in District 7, there is a community holiday event organized by Big Walt that will take place Saturday, December 9th. Community First Birmingham and the Southwest Alliance Association, along with the project Hope Will, are hosting their Winter Holiday Festival at Hope Will Baptist Church, Hillman Station. The location is 4817 Jefferson Avenue Southwest, and there will be a Christmas parade at 1:30 p.m., as well as toy giveaways, prizes, and care boxes. Council Warden Alexander is providing 250 turkeys. I didn't know that. That's cool. And Commissioner Sheila Tyson is providing 200 food boxes to be given away. Unwrapped toy donations are still being accepted, and for additional information, please contact Big Walt Wilson at 205-396-4647. We also have the Brown Sugar Nut Cracker, and it's back, and it's bigger and sweeter than ever, according to Ms. Ursula. This cultural twist to this holiday classic is directed, written, and choreographed by Birmingham's own Ursula Smith, who reimagined the tale to create a special holiday experience. The performance is on Saturday, December 16th, at 3:00 p.m., as well as there is a show at 7:00 p.m. at the Dorothy Jimmison Day Theater. You can grab your tickets at brownsugarnutcracker.com. As I shared with the counselors this morning, we are sharing with the community an update related to the last two years. It's called a blueprint strategic plan, and the community is invited to join us Thursday, December 14th, at the Birmingham Museum of Art, as we present a midterm report and strategic updates. A few more notes, Mr. President and council. We have our weekly note regarding uniform cart delivery. As you know, all single-family residents are now under the same uniform cart system. Businesses located on residential waste routes needing up to two carts and multifamily dwelling units of four or less may apply for carts at a fee per cart. And residents using the new carts should place them in front of their homes. I wanna continue to express this. The lid on your cart has to be closed in order for your trash to be picked up. Household garbage placed on the ground in alleys or on the ground in front of your residence, or on top of your trash bin, unfortunately cannot be picked up. And it's not because we don't want to, it is simply because as we phase not only into the new trash bins, we're also phasing into new trash pickup trucks, which have a lift. They no longer have two employees on the back of the truck actually jumping off and picking up trash. So if it's on the ground, if it's behind your trash bin, if it's in front of your trash bin, if it's on top of your trash bin, it cannot be picked up. So please adhere to putting your trash in the bin. And we've shared the process if you need to purchase a second bin, which your first bin was provided at no cost. Counselor Woods. Counselor Williams. Counselor Moore, and President O'Quinn, I see you. Thanks for cooperating. Look good, I guess. Make sure that we update the public. I think they deserve a picture, gentlemen. So please adhere. At some point when this meeting is over, that we can all snap it up and share with the world what you've been doing with your faces.
Ladies are all participating also. We're not shaving either.
Well, our faces.
On that note, Mayor Woodfin. On that note, Mayor Woodfin, Counselor Williams has shared that he will not be able to join us for council meeting next week, so we wanna do a picture immediately following the council meeting.
Understood, sir. Yes, sir.
I do have one thing that I think we need to announce. So Thursday and Friday of this week are a city holiday. So neighborhoods who were scheduled for garbage collection normally on Thursday or Friday, it's my understanding that Public Works is going to be collecting garbage in those neighborhoods on tomorrow, Wednesday.
For Thursday tomorrow, and for, I wanna get it right, I don't wanna say anything publicly wrong. One second, sir. Here we are. For household garbage pickup for this Thursday and Friday, of course, are altered. So for Thursday pickup, your pickup because of the holiday will be picked up tomorrow, the 22nd, Wednesday. And for those who have household garbage pickup this Friday, their refuse will be removed next Wednesday, the 29th. Next Monday and Tuesday is not altered.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question and wanted to raise a concern. So Kilo Springs, we recently, or last year sometime, we scheduled to, we were supposed to get some speed cushions over in that area, Frida Jane Lane. It's a road that, you know, is highly traveled, and people speed down it every single day. And I know that other neighborhoods have been able to get their speed cushions. And I would love to be able to see those speed cushions get put in, or at least get an update as to when they're supposed to take place. I know the last update that I received, they were supposed to be put in in June of this year. And so wanted to see if there was a...
I went to my phone, because I was actually asking about Echo Highlands and Kilo Springs this morning related to speed bumps.
Okay.
And a few other, a few other in District 4 and District 1. I just checked my phone. I do not have an update yet.
Okay.
But my goal is to provide you one before this council meeting is over.
Appreciate you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Smitherman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor Woodfin, I wanna just express my, I guess, I don't know the right word for it, because I'm kinda at a loss of words and really asking for your help again. And it's really with Five Point South Business District, and we have met about this several times. But for the first time, I heard from a business owner from one of my favorite restaurants over there pleading for help. They said, "I've been a business owner for over 10 years, and, you know, there was a shooting this past weekend, there have been shootings multiple times. Can we have an increase in police?" Last night, I think Counsel Abbott got the same email from the Five Point South Neighborhood President, asking the constituents all to come to the meeting because they're crying out for help. And I don't believe this, that they think we don't care, and I don't think that's right. Even though we have a police officer that comes to the neighborhood meeting, everything, and I know we can't stop guns, and Counsel Abbott has done all she has done, all she could do, I can do all I can do, but we only have some restrictions, and so we need your help with you and Chief Thurman. And I don't mind, you know, meeting with you and Chief Thurman and our Public Safety Chair, but something has to be done, because I don't want to lose businesses. I don't want people to be afraid to go down there. So really, I'm just asking for your help, really, and whatever we can, whether it's locally, on the state level, because it's ridiculous how Five Point South has changed. And not only Five Point South, but the whole city, but I'm talking about this neighborhood in particular, because as a business district, not only where we have a high school there, we have churches there. So I'm really just asking for your help right now. I'm going to send you a screenshot of those two emails I received as well.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Anyone else? I think that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all.
All right. Do we have any nominations to boards and agencies?
No, sir.
All right. Then we'll move forward with consideration of the consent agenda.
All right, the consent agenda starts with page two. Items number one, two, three, four, and five. Page three, item numbers six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. Page four, item number 11. Page five, item number 15 and 16. Page six, items 18, 19. Page seven, items 20 and 22. Page eight, items 24 and 25. Page nine, items 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30. Page 10, item numbers 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36. Page 11, item numbers 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, and 42. Page 12, items 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, and 48. Items number 13, page 13, items number 49, 50, 51, 52, and 53. Page 14, items number 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, and 59. That concludes the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you. So just to review.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Item 49 is requested to be withdrawn by the department.
Okay.
And 22 is requested to be withdrawn by the administration.
Okay. Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
On item 21, I know we have a correction on this, and we have the language for it. And it's on page seven. So the fifth line from the top, it should read, "American Rescue Plan in an amount of $750,000 and $250,000 from project account PR012CP3970, Roughness Mountain Trail Expansion."
Okay. Thank you. So just to review, there were some corrections to the agenda. On page four, items 12 and 13 were, have been recommended by the Public Safety Committee. On page five, item 14 also recommended by the Public Safety Committee. Also on page five, item 15 is being withdrawn from consent. Page six, items 17 was, 17 and 18 were recommended by the Public Safety Committee. Item 18 was also recommended by Budget and Finance, and item 17 is being withdrawn from consent. Item 19 was also recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. Page seven, as noted, there was a correction on item 21. Items also withdrawn from consent for that correction. Item, as noted, item 22 is being withdrawn by the administration. Page eight, item 23 is being withdrawn from consent. And page 13, item 49 is being withdrawn by the administration. Are there any additions? Or withdrawals from consent? Counselor Abbott.
I really just had one question that I wanted to ask about item 10 on page three. This is a shared project between the Glen Iris Neighborhood and Five Point South Neighborhood, and I just wanted to ask, how long after approval are these traffic calming projects being handled? I don't expect an exact date, but do we wait six weeks or six months, or?
I can say honestly, madam, Mr. President to Ms. Abbott's question, it could be anywhere in between. The thing about even JT Moore's question, for example, there are considerations. So for example, in the street, he referred to, I think there was some paving in proximity, if not on that street. And so if some cushions would've went down, that would have, pretty much, we didn't put them down because we paused to make sure the completion of the street paving was complete. And then we had to order, well, then backorder, so we don't even get them until December. So in regards to this, the money's in place. It's a process. What I can do is, between operations and between transportation, just keep you updated on process as far as when the order's been placed, how long it'll take, et cetera, et cetera. But honestly, I don't have a date. But the numbers you gave were interesting, because it can take anywhere from that low end to up to six months. JT, when was, how long has it been for the ones you mentioned?
I wanna say it was sometime last year that we discussed it, and allocated funds for those speed cushions to be put down.
Wanna make sure, Mr. Mitchell had something? Ms. Abbott?
Yeah, to, really to the council's point, we're trying to do internally our best efforts to get as many of these cases solved and completed to have everything installed. Right now, we're looking at 300-plus cases for speed cushions to be installed. So just to manage the expectations, as the mayor noted, is the inventory, you know, we still have supply chain issues, even though we're out of COVID, but we still have our boots on the ground from our staff to try and get as many of these cases resolved and installed to make sure that we comply with everybody's requests for the speed cushions or speed humps or traffic harm situations.
Okay. Are we contracting this workout, or are we doing it ourselves?
We are doing it ourselves.
Ms. Abbott and to the entire council, when we get them, it's not a problem. We can deploy our human capital to get them down. They got a routine, they've been doing this for a few years, so they know what to do. It's a matter of just actually getting them in.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I know people are going to ask, after they see it on our agenda, they expect them to be installed the next week, and we all know that doesn't happen, but I wanted to give them a reasonable expectation instead of a wild...
Please, please share with them that we don't make the cushions in-house. We actually have to, there's a process, procurement process, and then there's the actual ordering of them. Procurement process, it is what it is, but it's the actual, once you place the order, that window we don't control.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
And that one can stay on, can stay on.
Okay. Counselor Moore.
I'd like to pull item 20 on page five, and, is that page? No, that's page seven, I'm sorry. Item 20 on page seven, and item 25 on page eight.
All right. That's item 20 on page seven, and item 25 on page eight. Counselor Smitherman, did you have a question? Anyone else? All right. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so request. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. I believe we're ready for the vote.
Move the item.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and properly seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. The consent agenda passes. All right, the consent agenda passes. First item?
The first item will be item number twelve. In order, according to, according with Act 1969-916 of the Acts of Alabama, authorizing the chief of police to execute a NIBRIN enforcement support system agreement for a period not to exceed three years between the burial of alcohol, tobacco, firearms, and explosives in the city of Birmingham for its police department to establish and define the roles and responsibilities of the parties that will result in ATF-NES installation, operation, and administration for the dissemination of crime gun data to enhance the efforts of law enforcement, to integrate resources to reduce firearm violence, identify shooters and sources of crime guns, and refer them for prosecutions. The use of the NES system will be provided to BPD without charge to the city. The chief of police is further authorized to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the purpose of the agreement. This is item of permanent operation and a first reading. We need a motion for unanimous consent to take this item up today.
I move unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions? If not, we're ready for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye. Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Move the item.
Item passes. Next item, please.
Next item is item number thirteen. In order to ratify and adopt a cooperative agreement between the Drug Enforcement Administration and the city of Birmingham for its police department for participation in BPD officers in the DEA's Tactical Diversion Task Force, disbursements of diversion control fee account funds, vehicles and equipment to the city of Birmingham, and reimbursements to the city for qualified salary and benefits as well as qualified expenses, which was executed by Captain Raymond Cochran on April 27, 2022. The chief of police is authorized to execute an addendum to said agreement in accordance with the provisions of Act 1969-916, re-adopting all original provisions and limiting the term to a period not to exceed three years from the effective date. The chief of police is authorized to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the purpose of this agreement. This is also an item of permanent operation and first reading. We need a motion for unanimous consent to take up the item today.
I move unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded, and now we need a motion. Or so please call the roll on the unanimous consent.
All right, Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate? Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye. Now, a motion on the item?
Move approval?
All opposed? Move for approval, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that motion passes. We're gonna get through this, y'all. All right, next item.
Question? Did we actually vote on item twelve or did we just pass unanimous consent?
We passed unanimous consent, so...
Don't we need to vote?
Let's, I'll make a motion to reconsider item twelve so that we can handle that properly.
Second.
I move approval.
Second.
Yes, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That item passes?
Yes, thank you. All right, we've got that. Next item, I believe, is item fourteen.
All right. In order to ratify and adopt a cooperative agreement executed by the mayor on March 24, 2023, for a term of not more than three years between the Transportation Security Administration and the city of Birmingham for its police department for participation by the Birmingham Police Department in the TSA National Explosive Detection K-9 Team Program. The city shall provide TSA-certified K-9 teams to participate in the program, and TSA will provide training and reimbursement of the city's costs. It's estimated to be approximately $1,363,500. The agreement is in accordance with the provision of Act 1969-916. The mayor is authorized to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the purpose of this agreement. This is a first reading, permanent operation. We need a motion for unanimous consent to take up the item.
I move for unanimous consent.
Roll call?
Roll call. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate? Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Now, motion on the item?
Second.
Move approval?
All right.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
That motion passes.
Motion for the...
All right. Next item is item fifteen.
All right. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Birmingham and Cornerstone Revitalization Foundation, Inc., under which Cornerstone Revitalization Foundation, Inc. will be awarded funds under the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $2,400,000 for the provision of rehabilitation services such as roofing, repair of rotting wood, paint, and handicap accessibility ramps for up to eighty low, moderate-income homeowners throughout the city of Birmingham.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, any questions?
Yes, Dr. O'Quinn, I'd ask that this item be pulled from consent. I just wanted to be sure that our residents are aware of the opportunities that will be made available to them once we pass this particular item today. We know how blight vacant residential buildings, unkempt public space causes much blight in, not only in District Seven, but throughout the city. So we're excited to see this opportunity come for our residents. We know that this will be a great improvement on the quality of life and also helps to increase the home value and property value within the neighborhoods where those homes will be prepared. So I'm just excited today to see this opportunity come through this particular organization and through our grants. So thank you very much.
Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to ask just the process of residents applying for this pot of funds or how they go about getting on the list for consideration?
There's a yearly application process. It includes several things. One, residents' ability to be able to come to City Hall, 10th Floor Community Development Department, any questions they have and/or apply, and/or assistance in actual applying. That's one. Two, we do a public space forum where residents can come out. So last year, for example, it was at the Fountain Heights Community Recreation Center. Counselor Tate, I think I saw you there. I think for 200-something applications, you all, no exaggeration, I believe, well over 400, 500 people? Eight hundred? It was a very high number. There were more people that showed up that were actually able to get into the actual building. And so the demand is very, very high. Once the actual, and there's a window to apply, so in person, at this public meeting, as well as the ability to just come in on your own time at City Hall. Once that process closes, then the Community Development Department has to follow the federal guidelines as it relates to who actually qualifies. And from there, that's how the process starts and begins as it relates to getting with contractors and then being able to deploy funds. And that's a whole process within itself. But there's ample notice for the application process that is given citywide. City website, city channels, the ability to come down to City Hall, public meeting, et cetera.
Yeah, so it is, it's just through community development.
Yes, these funds are housed, the Community Development Block Grant dollars as it relates to, our Home Repair Fund is housed in Community Development, 10th floor.
All right, thank you. Yes. All right. Yes, Counselor Williams?
I have a question on this. In our packet, we're missing page four, or maybe that was a typo on mine, which has the budget for year one. Is the budget for year two and the budget for year one the same?
So... I'm gonna verify, but the answer is, that budget can be different because it actually just depends on the allocation from HUD. But I can actually verify the number of year one versus year two.
I guess my question is, so according to what Counselor Woods just asked, the dollars are held within our community development group, right?
Correct, yes.
And then this nonprofit oversees the, are they acting as like a contractor almost to...
Fiscal agent. I'll tell you all what we inherited, and I mean like all of us sitting up here. We were trying to, one, do this in-house. It proved to be not only inefficient, but getting us to the point where HUD was looking at us sideways because we were not deploying the funds in an appropriate time. That's one. Two, the demand is too high. I would say probably at least seven out of nine of your districts, extremely high. And so our ability to be in a position to accelerate the funds, not only being dispersed, but to amplify them to be multiply opportunities for contractors to be able to get a hold of that money and get out here to these roofs, to these porches, et cetera, exterior of these homes. This process has deemed to be more beneficial. I'll tell you, I inherited not only a backlog of requests, but there was a, the money, the pot of money was extremely high because it wasn't being deployed in a timely manner. So by doing this, community development has assured us that this is the most efficient way, as well as our ability to amplify and get these dollars out and actually repair these homes. So we won't be in the rear's twofold. One, money not being deployed, and two, people waiting years after the money's been approved to actually have their home repaired.
That actually, I can see that making a lot of sense. I mean, I think, I see, I guess my concern is this. You know, with 1.2 million dollars a year going out, we're spending roughly a quarter million dollars just on this administrative piece. And so I guess there is money in there for an audit. Is there any way that we can have a copy of that audit after it's complete?
Yeah, absolutely. HUD is gonna audit us, HUD is going to audit us. So we literally just share with the federal government.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I wanted to compliment Community Development because they told us when they came before Budget and Finance that they had cleared the backlog. And I thought that was very impressive. I've helped two people in my district to use that program, and it was life-changing for them because they had holes in their roofs. And the houses would've eventually been unoccupable and would've been probably demolished by the city. And so it's really an amazing program. You know, to get somebody a handicap ramp when they can't walk anymore, and of course roofs. You know, if your roof is bad, your house is gone. So it's amazing, the appreciation level of people who get that help.
Mr. President, to Ms. Abbott's point, I'll say three things. I echo your sentiment of huge kudos to the community development team. I actually put them in a room two years ago because I was not pleased with the backlog. The amount of money that existed in the pot and then the amount of people that say they've applied, why hasn't the money gotten to repair their home yet? So I appreciate their ability to like solve this and clear the backlog. I think the second point I would make is, we all know, you're out in the streets and communities and neighborhoods. Our, we have an aged population. And we know resources are short for a lot of our existing homeowners, and they need help for our seniors and elders, which brings me to the last point. Neighborhood revitalization has never been just about blight removal or going vertical with new housing, infield housing. There are also existing homeowners in all of our neighborhoods that we represent where, I don't know about you, but it's probably, if not the first, the second request I get from seniors who walk up to me in wherever I am, church, Walmart, gas station, doesn't matter. Do y'all still have your critical repair program? I need help with my roof. I need help with my porch. I need help with this, whatever exterior issue they have on their home. That, that never fails to be a request. So not only grateful for the Community Development Department, but I'm grateful for you all for supporting this effort to accelerate getting these dollars out of the door so more of our existing homeowners can get the repair they need.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'll just add that, you know, this is a total of 4.8 million dollars, which at roughly $30,000 a home, that covers about 160 homes. And we know that the, you know, need for this type of assistance is a lot bigger than that. So I'm aware that several of the counselors have allocated a portion of their American Rescue Plan funding towards these types of initiatives. And I also want to thank our private sector partners like Protective Life for their Protecting Good program and others who are in the private sector and nonprofit community that are doing this type of work. The need is tremendous, just evidenced by the turnout that we had last year at the event, at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. So this is definitely an issue where we welcome partnerships and collaboration. And the need is definitely out there. And folks who I've spoken to, especially, you know, folks in Fountain Heights and Druid Hills and other neighborhoods where the Protecting Good program has been implemented, it's a game changer for them. I mean, it's the difference between, you know, them staying in their home or not, or that home, you know, lasting for another generation or not. So we recognize the need and we welcome all comers who would like to partner with us. All right, I believe we're ready for the vote.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Clerk, I have to have an abstention, please. I abstain.
I also have to abstain due to board service. Thank you.
Same thing, thank you.
All right, so that motion passes. Next item is item seventeen on page six.
A resolution pursuant to 11-40-1, 11-43-55, and 15-28-21, Codes of Alabama, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the Birmingham Police Department for law enforcement purposes with Watch Systems LLC for a period not to exceed three years and ending October 23, 2026. Watch Systems LLC will provide to the city a subscription to a Fender Watch mobile application and software services, including but not limited to providing user training, help desk support, software... help desk support, software maintenance, continuous software upgrades as they are made available, and also providing offender watch postcard notification service which sends postal notifications to a specified area surrounding the offender and authorizing the city to expend an amount not to exceed $29,999.97 for the cost of such goods and services.
I move approval.
Second.
All right. I actually asked if this item be pulled from the consent agenda because I was curious. So. Mayor Woodson, do we have anybody who could tell us more about this program?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. President. Tracy Roberts with the Legal Department, City Attorney's Office.
Good morning. This is a mobile application that allows people to check the registry for sex offenders, find that where they're located. Also, part of the contract is for Watch Systems to provide the, the physical notification when a sex offender moves into an area or when they're located in an area.
Okay, so my understanding is that this is an existing program that the municipality actually has responsibility for sex offender track trafficking and notification. So this is to continue that program.
Right, it's an existing, existing contract that's ending, and we're entering into it for another three years. The responsibility is with the police chief. We're contracting with a third party to provide that, that required action.
Okay, Counsel Williams, did you have any questions?
So I guess my, my question is, with this contract, do we send out postcards or is it just app-based?
No, the postcards will be sent out by offender watch.
Okay.
Counselor Abbott.
I was wondering about the postcards. Do they send them to the property owner or do they send them to the person who actually lives in the, in the dwelling? Do you know?
I, I'd have to look at the statute. They'll send it out in compliance with the statute, but I think it's the, the people in the immediate location. I think there's a distance from where the offender would live. But everyone that they're required to send it to, that's what we're contracting for them to do.
It's gonna be that address, Ms. Abbott, but we will ver, we will verify.
Okay, because it's the resident who needs it. The property owner probably lives in Michigan.
That's, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Tate.
Mayor, I, I want to expand on that a little bit. Counselor Abbott, with my knowledge, the postcards do come to the people that live in the residence. And sex offenders have to remain so many feet from a school, you know, at different locations. So the residents are, they are aware that, you know, if you have somebody that's on a sex offender register, they're living in your area.
Good, thank you.
All right, I believe we're ready for the vote.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that motion passes. Next item.
Next item is item twenty. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter a project funding agreement between the City of Birmingham and Robert Hill, doing business as Robert Hill Custom Taylor, under which RACT will undertake a project that will involve the relocation, renovation and expansion of the existing business, which was recently forced to move, and the city will provide financial assistance and incentives under the Rise initiative in an amount not to exceed $17,250 in support of the project.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned second, and Counsel Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. So really, I wanted to, you know, pull this off of consent. So I really had a question about the support that we give to, you know, our different businesses within this city. First of all, I just want to say, you know, congratulations and, you know, thank you for, you know, the work that IEO is doing. Because I think that this Rise program is very helpful to a lot of our businesses within the city. But just looking to find out if there are other tools that we have at our disposal to utilize as well. In several, in recent months, there have been several businesses that have closed down because of some of the same challenges that this business faced as well. And so we, we've had, I've had different businesses to reach out to me and say, hey, you know, I can't afford to stay in the space that I'm in because the rent or the lease is being, you know, doubled on me each month, and I can't afford to, to stay here. And so really just trying to find out what other tools are available to support our businesses within the city and, and specifically around black businesses. And is there a space or are we even looking into, you know, using some of these surplus spaces as possible incubators or, you know, spaces that, you know, businesses won't have to worry about fear of being pushed out or forced out of their space?
Yes, sir. And I apologize for all the moving around, but I heard every word you said. I had some thoughts, mind at high level. What I wanted to do is, Cornell Wesley, who leads Innovation Economic Opportunity, to give you and your colleagues that detail. Listen, I recognize, I was in a meeting yesterday. There are significant amount of small business districts that exist throughout the City of Birmingham, not just our central business district that includes downtown. And I think, Cornell, what you and I need to do a better job of is, is I guess, when we have these public meetings for small business owners to come in and know resources are available, to also include the council on that communication so they can know how we're corresponding with a business that may be distressed, a business that may need resources or any form of assistance from the city. So to his question, not just Ra, not just Rise, but can you explain some of the other tools within our toolbox of how we support small businesses who may need any assistance?
Good morning. Again, my name is Cornell Wesley. I serve as the Director for the Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. First thing, I want to honor Mr. Hill who's, who's present here. Mr. Hill is Birmingham. Mr. Hill has been here for 40-plus years. He is evident with your support of why Rise is so important for our existing small businesses. So, Mr. Hill, 40-plus years in Birmingham, he is why this program exists. So let's start at the foundation. The first thing is our website, ieo.birminghamal.gov. That's where the Rise application is. But to the public, Rise is only one tool in the toolbox of a municipality. And so what we do is work with our strategic partners to, to ensure that there's technical assistance in the space. We, we do that through our Office of Business Diversity and Opportunity, which will provide a concierge service, walk with you hand in glove, to the following. The Birmingham Business Resource Center, the Small Business Development Center at Innovation Depot, which gives you, pardon my French, Free 99 Services. Birmingham, that's free services for business proposals, small business plan, all of the above, at no cost to you. In addition to Prosper Birmingham, you have Rev Birmingham if you're operating within the downtown corridor. You have Woodlawn United if you're operating within Woodlawn. You have the Minority Business Development Center, and I'm gonna repeat all of this because I want everybody to catch it. Again, the Small Business Development Center at Innovation Depot at no cost to you. You have the Birmingham Business Resource Center with, with our great friend Bob Dickerson over there. You have Prosper Birmingham, whose focus is on minority businesses and ensuring that they have a space in Birmingham. You have Rev Birmingham, who also focuses on downtown impact. Woodlawn United with the name Woodlawn, Think Woodlawn as well. And so we only have so much resources, right? And so what is done in this one year of existence for Rise have shown you how important Rise has been to the community. And so the challenge is, is we need more help and we need more strategic partners, but our resources can go only but so far. Happy to entertain any further questions.
I think Counselor Moore, just to add to Mr. Wesley's point is, we acknowledge everybody's not gonna come to our website. So I think part of your question is, well, how do people know these resources exist? And particularly for businesses who are not downtown, right? I'm listening to what you and your colleagues are saying. We're grateful to have a Small Business Council. We spend a significant amount of our time just listening to that Small Business Council. Part of what they do, part of what they do, Chaz, let me see your mic. Part of what they do, okay, it's all of us, nevermind. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Part of what they do is, there are eyes and ears as well for businesses that may need help or distress. And so if a business owner doesn't come directly to us, if there are issues, sometimes they, sometimes they, we get it from our Small Business Council. The other thing I'll say is this, you had a business in your district, the clothing boutique. And he's, how do I have to say it? He's transforming what he's doing, right? He's making a pivot from a storefront to online, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of time what happens with our small business community, they may just make a decision, and it's not necessarily because the city is or is not doing something. It's just they're choosing to make a decision for themselves. I think with that, Cornell, what we can start doing is no different than when a, a city employee decides to retire and or leave, an exit interview. Is there something we could have done better? Is there something we could have provided? I think that's something we can add in our toolbox about why some people leave. Sometimes it's not us, they just decide that they want to close shop or they want to pivot from a storefront to online or life happens. So I guess that's something we can possibly add on a, a exit interview, if you will, for those who are closing their doors but did not ask for any assistance from us.
No, I think that would be awesome. And again, I appreciate, you know, the, the work that you all are doing to support our businesses. I think that, you know, what you suggested before about including us as the council and knowing when you all are having those meetings and, you know, meeting with businesses just so that we will be more informed about, you know, how we can build better connectivity and provide more resources would be great. Because I think when they, when they come to us, you know, I want to be able to have something to give them because, you know, people are putting their savings, you know. They're, they're, they all in, right? Entrepreneurship is, is not an easy feat. And so I know folks are reaching out for help. I just want to make sure that I'm pointing them in the right direction and that it's actually something that's going to be beneficial to them. So, yeah.
Counselor Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it would be a good idea if we almost did a tour with you all in each district or maybe combined two districts and see if we can get all the small business together in one space, maybe. Or even if we did like a Small Business Resource Workshop or a fair, maybe trying to see if we can target those businesses who maybe don't catch what you guys are posting on the social media because I think we talked about this, I forgot what I said. The algorithm with IG sometimes and Facebook, a lot of times somebody can miss your posts depending on when you post it. So I think that would be a really great thing. Just being a small business owner myself, I understand how hard it is because during the pandemic, it was really, really hard. And there are certain times of the year where business does slow down, so. But, Mr. Wesley, I do want to say thank you for all that you have done. I've seen a tremendous difference between the small business support you've given, the different initiatives you've done. I saw a workshop in NLC about transforming downtown office buildings into, into residential areas. And I'm like, oh, IEO is already doing that, so I just want to say thank you. And, Mr. Hill, I said this at Budget and Finance, thank you so much for staying in Birmingham. It really means a lot to us. I know that you had particular circumstance where, like Counsel Moore was saying, the rent went up, what, four or five times? And you could have gone anywhere else, but you decided to stay. So thank you so much for all you've done and all that you do for Birmingham. And any way we can help you all help with the small businesses. I know I am number 23 that's coming up. A few of us are helping small businesses, but I would like to brainstorm like what Counsel Moore was saying to see how we can help other people.
Happy to do so, Counsel.
Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to expand because I know Director Wesley, that you do do the coffee and conversations with small business owners. So if you can just get that information, you know, over to us, because I saw that on your, on the Facebook page. So I do know that that's a tool that you are using to make sure that you disseminate the information.
And we do though, we hold those, hold those monthly, coffee and conversations.
Okay, and they're in the morning, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
If, if there's a preference or a need in your respective district, would love to join with you and host one in your, in your respective district at your leisure.
All right, thank you so much.
Counselor Clark.
Couldn't let you get away.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to compliment you on this concierge service because I do think we have a lot of resources for small business and micro business support, but it is an alphabet soup and it can be hard to navigate. So thank you, and I just want to, I know off the top of your head, you probably forgot Urban Impact and the curriculum they offer. I think, I forget the name of it. But also Create Birmingham has Co-Starters. And then there's some special funds that if you're a Co-Starters graduate, you can access through the CDFI that they work with that came out of the Regional Planning Commission. I can't remember the name of that either. But I just want to say there's a lot out there, but, you know, beyond the direct funding that the city can provide that is very limited, there's a wealth of resources that the concierge service can help you navigate. So I, I'm just glad you all are doing that to, to help people get, get to the right resource that they need for technical assistance and other sources of financial assistance as well. Thank you.
Counselor Moore.
I just, I just add one more thing. So I know that, you know, the city has surplus properties, and one of the questions that I asked was, you know, is there a way for us to possibly partner with some or, you know, yeah, possibly partner with an organization in one of those surplus properties to be able to, to house businesses within them? I don't know if that's something that's, you know, within our wheelhouse, but, you know, just trying to think of different ways that we can avoid, you know, businesses being pushed out if we have space available for them to, to do their business in.
Mr. President, to, to Counselor Moore's point, I would like to get with you, sir, if you're comfortable with that, let's flush your ideal out, see how creative we can get, you know. Other cities have WeWork spaces. And so what I hear him possibly saying, which is why we need to flush it out with him, but what would it look like for a, a city-owned WeWork space for a small business that even either exists or one that's possible startup, micro business, that may need space, may need assistance outside of technical assistance, but actual storefront space? That is not your full idea, but is that, am I even on the right track?
Man, we, you, you in the neighborhood.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll flush it out, sir, you and I, along with Mr. Wesley.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. I believe we're ready for the vote. Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that motion passes, item twenty-one.
I'm sorry, item twenty-one. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute foreignness act of said city in an agreement between the City of Birmingham and Roughness Mountain Nature Coalition, Inc. In an amount not to exceed $750,000 and $250,000 from money received by the city for the American Rescue Plan Act to fund the redevelopment of East Said Park, also known as South Robert Park, located at 621 Dogwood Drive. The redeveloped park would be accessible for people of all abilities with over 10,000 feet of wheelchair accessible trails that will connect various immersive learning and natural sensory hubs.
All right. Do we have a motion on the item?
Second.
All right, it's been moved to property second, and Counselor Smithman, did you have a question? No, Counsel Williams?
I don't have a question, but I'll go ahead and talk about it since it's the District Two ARCA project.
That's right.
And, and thank. And, and thank, uh, Roughness Mountain and their executive director, who's here today, Carly, for doing such an awesome job of, um, of, of being a good steward of really the entire east side of Birmingham. You know, you, we have such an amazing resource, uh, in Roughness Mountain that, uh, I, I really think it's unique to really the entire state. And I'm excited that this East Side Park, which has been vacant, um, and, and dilapidated, will now be able to be, uh, an ADA accessible area of Roughness Mountain. If you've been to Roughness Mountain, you know, it's, there's not a lot of ADA accessibility when you're climbing a mountain. But this will have an opportunity for those that do have ADA needs to be able to use, use Roughness. And I'm excited about it. I think it will, I think it will transform not just that Roblox Springs neighborhood, but I think it'll really be an asset that, um, the entire east side. You might even see Clint come over there or something like that, but I'm, I'm very excited about it. And also what they have done to get other funding. Carly just let me know that they received the Philip Morris, uh, Fund for Design Arts, which is $25,000 and that solves a gap. As we know, ARPA doesn't allow us to use any of the money for the design phase. So they've gone out and tried to, have tried to do everything that they can, um, to fundraise privately as well as, as apply for grants for, to kind of help the project with all of the really stipulations that Treasury has put on ARPA guidelines. So it, it's great when you have partners willing to, uh, to go that link. So thank you, Carly. Thank you for everybody at Roughness that's involved and we appreciate it.
All right. I believe we're ready for the vote.
I just want to acknowledge that, that la, the added language that we have for the two different funding sources. Want to make sure the council acquiesce to that.
Yes, uh, that was noted, um, and the funding source for the 250,000 was, was provided earlier.
Yes, sir. And then we'll provide that language to the clerk's office.
All right. Yes, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that motion passes. Item 22 was withdrawn. That brings us to item 23 on page eight.
Item number 23. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the City of Birmingham and the Penny Foundation in an amount not to exceed $110,000, under which the Penny Foundation will provide services to the city by supporting up to 44 small businesses by operating, administering, and managing the Districts 1, 5, 6, and 7 Small Business Grant Program to assist small businesses located in Council Districts 1, Council Districts 1, 5, 6, and 7 of the City of Birmingham that are experiencing financial hardship as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. By providing small business grants of up to $2,500 per business with the administration fee of $10,000 for a total program amount not to exceed $110,000.
All right, move the item.
Second.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Counselor Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that this item be moved from consent just to make our residents aware of the use of ARPA dollars in Districts 1, 5, 6, and 7. We're providing this opportunity for small businesses. So Counselor Moore, this shows you some other items that are going into the toolbox that will help small businesses. This may seem small to some, but for some business owners, $2,500 goes a long way. So I think all of us that are, have been a part of this, we're excited to have Penny Foundation to, um, and the city to be able to bring this opportunity to our residents. So I want to thank you and thank the members of the public and keep on notice. We have an opportunity coming to you. Thank you.
Counselor Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to, um, thank Mr. Watson. He's in the audience at the Penny Foundation and Council President for pulling it off so that the three of us could join this initiative. I think this is great. Especially going with the Small Business Incubator that I've been giving ARPA funding at the Common Thread Cultural Arts Building, number two. Just really helping to promote small businesses, um, to help the economy. And so like, um, Council President Protem said, $2,500 can go a lot, uh, towards a lot for these businesses, whether it's helping them to keep afloat, helping them to keep up with the, uh, interface or the outer face of their business. So I'm hoping to see a lot more, uh, businesses being birthed and a lot more businesses being revitalized using these grants. So, um, I really want to commend the rest of my colleagues for this. Thank you.
Yes, likewise, uh, commend my colleagues for joining in this initiative. As it was originally devised, um, we know that small business owners often have unanticipated expenses that arise. You know, something like a piece of equipment that, that fails or a, a pipe that burst. You know, those, those types of items can be quite expensive. And, um, if you, you know, don't have, uh, some means of addressing them, then, you know, it may be the difference between, uh, you keeping your doors open or having to shut down. So, um, we're grateful for the opportunity to utilize American Rescue Plan dollars in this way to assist small businesses. There's no further discussion. We'll entertain the vote.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that motion passes. Next item?
Item number 25. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Birmingham and Woodlawn United, under which you, Woodlawn United will be awarded funds under the Community Development Block Grant in an amount of $1,803,402 for the provision of rehabilitation services such as roofing, repair, and riding wood, paint and handicap accessibility ramps for up to 60 low, moderate income homeowners in the Woodlawn, Eastlake, and Kingston neighborhoods. Move second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yeah. Probably could have discussed this at the earlier, uh, item, but just wanted to put the neighborhoods of Woodlawn, Kingston, and Eastlake on notice that this opportunity was coming, uh, down the pipeline and be available to them. And like it was already discussed earlier, um, very, very grateful for, um, these types of opportunities. Like Mayor said earlier, um, I know we have a lot of seniors that really, uh, are looking to take advantage of something like this. I know a lady in particular in Kingston right now with a hole in her roof, um, where it's leaking. And so on days like today, when it's raining outside, you know, we take, take it for granted, you know, that we have a roof that works. She, on the other hand, uh, cannot even sleep in her bedroom because the water leaks right over her bed. And so, um, thankful for this opportunity and, and looking forward to folks being able to take advantage of it.
Yes, um, so, yeah, we didn't acknowledge it earlier, but, and I said, you know, that the other two items covered about 160 homes. So this adds 60 houses to bring the grand total to 220. So, yes, very much needed. And thank you to Woodlawn Foundation for, uh, participating. Do not believe we have any discussion, call for the vote.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
All right, that motion passes. Next item?
Next item, item 53. On page 13. A resolution accepting a change order in the amount of $14,252.77 to add funds to the owner contingency allowance of Sherrod Construction Company, Inc., Birmingham for the Birmingham City Council Chamber's lighting package to provide for additional work that was requested by the city and authorize the mayor to modify the contract with Sherrod Construction Company, Inc. and substantially the form contained within the changed order documents in accordance with said bid, providing that the total compensation payable on the contract not exceed their appropriation.
It's been motioned and seconded. Do we have any discussion? All right, if not, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that motion passes. Matt Clark, I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Yes.
All right, at this time, uh, we will have, um, hold the new business from each of our counselors. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. So in District 8, there are no neighborhood meetings this week, um, I guess because of Thanksgiving and... Uh, last week we had the opportunity, many of us up here had the opportunity to attend the National League of Cities City Summit Conference in Atlanta, where we were able to learn about best practices from other cities as well as meet our counterparts from around the state and country. It was a wonderful experience that will definitely enhance our service. I want to extend a hearty congratulations to Council President Daryl O'Quinn for his election to the National League of Cities Board of Directors, where he will also serve on the Transportation Infrastructure Services Committee. Also, the same congratulations I'd like to extend to Council President Protem Alexander for her reelection as Regional Director, Area 15 of the NBC Leo, and her continued service as Vice Chair of the NL, National League of Cities Large City, Large Cities Council. And I think it's pretty amazing that our leaders, uh, here on the council are also leaders of a national association of our counterparts. So congratulations, colleagues. Uh, the Five Points West community has a beautiful holiday tradition of providing meals for, for the area's first responders. And last week, um, they provided meals to our firefighters. And in a couple of weeks, they'll be providing meals to the officers at West Precinct. I just wanted to acknowledge this longstanding tradition, uh, one of many in the Five Points West community, and just thank the, them, uh, the area leaders for their commitment to taking one day each year to serve those who serve us every day. We will not be walking this Thursday, which is Thanksgiving, but we'll be, we'll be back to our regularly scheduled weekly meetups on Thursday, November 30th. And I want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy day of Thanksgiving. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Counselor Moore.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. I had a quick question before I start my remarks. Wanted to know, uh, in terms of street resurfacing, um, do we usually communicate with Birmingham Waterworks Inspire before those things take place? And I only ask because, uh, recently over in the Design City neighborhood, there was a road that got resurfaced, but then I think shortly after got torn back up because, uh, Inspire had to come in and, you know, do some work as well as Birmingham Waterworks. And so I was trying to find out, is there any type of communication that takes place between those before resurfacing, uh, ensues?
Mr. President?
Yes.
So I'll confirm, I know when there's work to be done by any of those companies, they're supposed to notify us. We've had this issue come up, but I don't know about advance notice to, to them individually. So I'll confirm that with our, with our BDID department and follow right back up with you, Counsel.
Okay, thank you. There are no Neighborhood Association meetings. Just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Yeah, and if you gotta ask who made the potato salad, you probably eating at the wrong table. So, um, yeah, just don't, just don't ask, just eat food, man, and, and have a good time. So happy Thanksgiving and everybody be safe.
All right, thank you. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning and Zoning Committee, the meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled due to lack of cases. Maybe they were hungry for turkey. So, um, we get a free day tomorrow. Neighborhood Association meetings tonight. We have the Five Point South Neighborhood Meeting at the Highlands United Methodist Church. And, um, I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. It's always a time to stuff ourselves and anybody else we can find who looks like they need a meal. So that's a good thing. And, uh, we still want people to contact MyBM311 using the app so that you can send pictures so that the people who go out to fix the problem know what they're looking for. So that's one of the best things that the city has is that app, so use it. Calling your city council office might get you the question, have you called 311 or entered your request in the MyBM311 app? So may as well do it. And then we want residents of District 3 to continue to visit our website for all of the miscellaneous information that we get that you may be interested in. We try to put everything on that website. And that is myBM District, oh, excuse me, not my, BMDistrict3.com. So thank you very much and everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Counselor Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a neighborhood meeting in District 6. Five Point South Neighborhood will meet tonight in the South Hall of Highland United Methodist Church at 6:00 PM today. Uh, the next Budget and Finance meeting will meet this Monday, November 27th at 3:30 PM. Submissions were due yesterday by 5:00. So any submissions received, uh, today and moving forward will be placed on the next Budget and Finance agenda. Yesterday was a good day in District 6. We gave out 300 turkeys and dinner boxes along with, uh, the Community Food Bank, Sandra Smithman, Lightfoot Law Firm, and Ferris Rowling Pitt Law Firm. And this was our annual turkey giveaway on yesterday. We did a drive-through due to COVID, um, pre-COVID, we used to deliver house to house, but just to be safe. And so I would like to give a special thanks to the Brothers Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Beta Mu Nu Chapter. Also Jason with Community Development came to volunteer. I really want to thank my staff for all of their hard work in organizing this event. I really enjoy going to the NLC City Summit Conference. I have, um, been going to this the last two or three years and just learning so much. Uh, also Counselor Clark, um, I'm on the Board Directors for Wimish, but mine is a two-year term actually. So it was be, good to be able to serve that. And then, um, council leadership and myself, we serve on individual committees. I think Counsel Tate's on public safety. Are you on public safety now? On public safety. And so we have our individual federal advocacy committee meetings as well. So I'm on the, um, budget one. And so I was really excited to hear that because of our meeting this past March with one of the, uh, staff for the Senate, we were able to get a bill drafted that's currently in the House and the Senate. And it's supposed to help create more uniformity amongst the, uh, federal grant-making agencies. Because right now what's happening, a lot of municipalities, and I'm sure we've experienced it, have to go to different websites, et cetera. So just trying to help make it easier for us to apply for grants. So that was a big win for us. And also I went to different workshops on environmental justice. Counselor Clark and Abbott, you guys would be interested in that. We talked about trees and how trees can help with heat mapping and, you know, about planting fruit trees as well that helps with food insecurity and the environment. And I know Counsel Clark and I went to the same workshop about, uh, affordable housing and the Housing Accelerator Program that NLC is trying to start. So, uh, I really learned a lot of good information. It was great networking. And then I do have a question. I don't know if Counsel President can answer this or one of the chiefs. So when you, um, rent a scooter, do you have to take a picture of it once you, um, once you drop it off or when you're smart to, or you're about to use it?
Yes, my understanding is that, um, there's a combination of, um, GPS tracking that you actually can't disconnect your session from the scooter until it's in proximity to one of the designated parking areas. And then, um, most of the vendors also require that you, uh, take a picture of, you know, the scooter properly parked in order to, again, discontinue the session. So I believe that's in place.
Okay, I ask that because, well, I got the cool experience of being able to use a scooter. While in Atlanta, we were going, um, dinner with friends, going down the Belt Line. It was so cool to see everybody go through the scooters. And, um, I did struggle, y'all, but it was a really good experience to be able to use a scooter in a different city. I know we use it in Birmingham as well, so. And I would also like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you get to eat a lot of turkey, ham, and sweet potato pie. And then always visit our website, d6bham.com for updates. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, um, just quickly, in regards to the, the NLC, uh, conference, our PIO team has prepared a marginally lengthy, but, uh, very informative video that I think they did an excellent job. They're going to air that, um, at the adjournment of the meeting. And I think it's a, a great overview of, uh, what we did this past week and some of the things that we accomplished. So, uh, look forward to that at the close of the meeting. All right, Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Got a few announcements.
I want to thank Calvary Resurrection Christian Church and Rebirth Christian Fellowship, as well as Refresh Family Church for turkey giveaways in the district. Over the last week, they were really able to reach a lot of residents and make an impact. So, thank you guys for your continued services of yourself and your congregations. I want to thank the Black Warrior River Keepers and all the volunteers who participated in this past Saturday's cleanup, you know, continually able to get out on a regular basis and remove litter from the roadways, working to really increase education efforts as well as enforcement efforts and kind of get the community looking how we want it to look at all times. And want to congratulate Coach Lynn Slater, the Huffman Lady Vikings coach, on her three-hundredth win on yesterday, three hundred. Both of the Huffman basketball coaches are now in the three-hundred win club, so, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. The East Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six PM at Wooderson Middle School. Evergreen Neighborhood will also meet tonight at five PM at the Evergreen Community Center. South Pratt Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six PM at Library Hope Baptist Church. Smithville Estates also will meet tonight at six PM at Daniel Payne Middle School. In Ridge Neighborhood Meeting will be on Thursday, November twenty-third at six PM. And that's a conference call, and you can dial one at one-two-five-three-two-one-five-eight-seven-eight-two. And the meeting ID is very long, eight-three-five-six-five-eight-six-one-nine-five-five. The next public safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at one PM. Please submit agenda items Wednesday, November twenty-second, no later than twelve noon to Mr. Greg Stanley, and that's Gregory Stanley at BirminghamAL.gov. Also, I want to just echo what my colleague said, I learn so much every time I go to these events. We all went to different panel discussions, congratulations, Mr. President. Counselor Smith, Madam Pro Tim, on your elections and representing Birmingham proudly. And well, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be the delegate for Alabama and also having the opportunity to serve on the Federal Advocacy Committee for Public Safety. So, I should know that in the coming weeks or so. But it was just good to continue to build national partnership, had an opportunity to sit in on a panel with Mayor Ross Baraka, who, when Counselor Woods and I went to Newark, New Jersey, the blueprint that they have is exceptional. And just to hear every town and all of, got an opportunity to sit in on youth and just listen to the voices of young people talk about how we can reduce violence. I want to thank the mayor, those, myself, and those who supported Credible Messenger. So, putting a plea out to my colleagues, if you have not invested in one of the public safety initiatives, I highly recommend that you do so. So, I did make it back from Atlanta to go to the Credible Messenger certification. So, we have thirty-eight people certified with Credible Messenger training. I want to thank Clint Lacy and his team for coming into Birmingham and pouring into those that are ready to deploy into Birmingham. So, we'll keep you guys updated when we get ready to deploy those that will be working in the community. Madam Pro Tim, you had a person from your district as well. So, it is a host of individuals from different communities that are credible, are ready to get into Birmingham and do this work. It's not easy, as I often say, you cannot police your way out of this. All of this has to be a community-driven effort. And Mayor Baraka really spoke on that, you know, how community drives change, you know, in neighborhoods to what we want to see. So, I really want to just echo that, and I can't stress this enough, that it's going to take all of us, all of us, not just the police, but everybody. That means clergy, that means business owners, that means people in the community. And so, we want to see Birmingham move forward and be a better Birmingham, we all got to play our part. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development Tourism will be meeting today at eleven-thirty or as soon as we can get over there in conference rooms, D and E. And especially wanted to thank Representative Polis and Pastor Beavers at the Star Church. We were able to also bless the east side of Birmingham with some Thanksgiving meals. And I think overall, I think the overall impact was four hundred families, which is pretty significant when you talk about, you know, that many, not just individuals, but families that were able to come through. And it's kind of one of my favorite times of the year, getting to have that interaction and that whether you live in District Two or not, it really is a special time. And also, happy Thanksgiving to all of y'all and your families and the whole city.
All right, Counselor Tate, you had a...
I'm sorry, Mr. President, one more thing, happy Thanksgiving. Also, I want to shout out to Principal Hines at Carver yesterday. I just got a call that they needed some help, so I was able to go out and purchase some things to help a family, so she matched my donation, so we blessed the family in District Nine also. And then, I got an opportunity to meet Counselor Smithman's farmer's market, Mr. Ham. So, I was able to buy some greens and two bunches of collard, some nice cabbage and sweet potatoes, and blessed the family in District Nine that was in there. So, shout out to President Hines and Mr. Davenport, who reached out to me, and we were able to bless the family.
Excellent, thank you. Pro Tim Alexander.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. These are your announcements for District Seven. I do want to thank Counselor Clark for acknowledging the opportunities that we had in NLC. Congratulations to Mr. President, to Counselor Smithman, to Counselor Tate. And I'm also equally excited to have had an opportunity to gain some other opportunities to serve through NLC membership. Has already been stated, this is a meeting that allows us a great opportunity. City Summit allows you to network and learn and gain more information from other colleagues who are locally elected officials, being mayors, city councilors, or commissioners. One of the things I learned in the Large Cities Council meeting, we had a speaker that talked about the use of surplus properties and how that can benefit and be utilized across the city to help with community revitalization and engagement. And they also talked a little bit about homeless housing and what the city of Atlanta is doing for that. And I think they're leading the way, and we're also on board to provide similar services to our residents. So, grateful to have had that opportunity. As far as meetings this week in District Seven, today, the Green Acres Neighborhood Association will meet at six-thirty PM, that'll be at the Lifting Christ Worship Center. Bulk trash and bush pickup is scheduled today for Roosevelt City. So, if they haven't come by your house yet, be sure to get your items out for bulk trash and bush pickup. Tomorrow, bulk trash and bush pickup is scheduled for the Germania Park South Neighborhood in District Seven. And on Monday, November twenty-seventh, bulk trash and bush pickup is scheduled for Powderly. Just want to remind, I know we can't talk about this enough, but if you have trash scheduled to be picked up for Thursday, you should be setting that out for tomorrow. And so, that does happen in my neighborhood, so I'm going to have to be sure to go home tonight and remember to put that out tonight instead of getting it picked up on Thursday. So, let's be sure to adhere to that. I do want to echo and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I wish I'd learned, been able to pick up some of those collard greens, Counselor Tate. So, I'm sure they'll make a great addition to someone's table. Also, I'd like to thank the District Seven staff. While I was away at National League of Cities, they did complete our last leg of D Seven Days of Giving, where we gifted a complete holiday meal, Thanksgiving meal, for seventeen families in District Seven. Each of our neighborhoods, the neighborhood president selected a family. So, we're wishing them a great, happy Thanksgiving, and to each of you. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Announcements for District Five, Central City Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM at the Birmingham Central Library located at twenty-one hundred Park Place. Southeastlake Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday, November twenty-seventh, at six PM at Eastlake United Methodist Church located at seventy-seven fifty-three First Avenue South. The Transportation Committee will meet on Monday, June, nope, on Monday, November twenty-seventh, on the third floor of City Hall in conference rooms, D and E. Items can be submitted to the agenda by contacting Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.phillips@birminghamal.gov. Also, want to thank our partners who helped with the District Five Turkey and Food Box Delivery. Yesterday, we were able to reach many dozens of families, especially with the help of serious injury lawyers and Principal David Brown over there. They really helped us extend our effort and reach a lot of folks that were beyond our internal capacity. So, thank you. A reminder, we'll have that video after the meeting about the NLC Conference last week to my male colleagues. Remember, we need to get a picture for No Shave November. And then, finally, for all of us, please keep in mind that we have a committee of the whole meeting starting at one-thirty in conference rooms, D and E. And we have procured lunch in order to keep you guys around so you don't run off somewhere. So, stick around. And with that...
Mr. President?
Yes.
This is to Counselor Moore's question, I know all the councils were interested in this. James Fowler and our BDAT team said that there is a coordination meeting with all of the utilities to let them know the roads that are coming up to be paved, just FYI.
All right, thank you for that information. All right.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, meeting adjourned.